Screen here. So we will call the meeting to order. First up is roll call and seating of alternates. I've got Ann Creme, Steve Nelson, Leanne and myself here. Scott Person is not here, so we will seat Ann Blanchard for Sky. And Susan England and Kevin are both absent this evening. Next up are additions and changes to the agenda. And I would like to add an old business item and we'll put it at the top of the list. So this will be old business A. And that would be to vote and adopt the Affordable Housing Plan. So the other old businesses will now become B and C. And when we get down to item seven discussion, I would, I would like to add a discussion on the Common Driveway at 580 Lake Road. Just, you know, some thoughts on that since we had our last meeting and can wrap that up. So I make a motion to add those two items to the agenda. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Yeah. Thanks, Ann. That's Ann Creme. We'll try and help you keep the Ann straight here, Abby. And so vote to approve Ann Creme.
Yeah. Yeah, I.
Steve.
I.
Leanne.
Hi.
Ann Blanchard.
Hi.
And I vote I as well. Motion to add those two items. The agenda passes five zero zero. Next item is public speak and I see nobody here from the public. So with that was somebody saying something? Nope. Okay. Next up is the old business and we'll start with the motion to adopt the Affordable Housing Plan. And under the Affordable Housing Plan, I did give the brief Saturday morning. I thought the brief was okay. I thought I did. Okay. But unfortunately attendance was not so good. So in addition to Eric, Jim, myself and Leanne, we had Diane Grenier and Joanne. I think it's Hertz from the Finance Committee. Those were the only, the only other people that actually attended. The good news is we do have it recorded and so that'll be available. And I thought the feedback from both Diane and Joanne were was very favorable on, on the plan. The one, the one negative comment that Diane Grenier had concerned, she didn't think the people of Andover were going to be all that interested in having mobile homes and in mobile home parks in town. And we explained how that, that wasn't an item up for debate. The state said this is the way that's going to be. We can put some restrictions on it to make it so that those mobile homes that are wider than 22 feet wide look nice and support the character of the town. But with regards to being able to just prohibit like our regulations currently do, mobile homes and mobile home parks, that's no longer a possibility. Joanne from the Finance Committee, you know, said that, you know, when, when I talked about the declining population and I found a couple of other statistics, well, and they were out of our plan. I just added them to the presentation that talked about, you know, where the, where the population is going to be in 2030 and 2040, you know, continuing significant declines in population. And, and so that got their attention. And essentially the seniors are moving out of town because they can't get, you know, we don't have housing for them to downsize into. And the young folks are moving out of town because we don't have anything they can afford to move into. So that doesn't look good for that. But that's that was it. I did have, and I can share, I made a couple of corrections to Bill's final and they included, I put page numbers on the table of contents. There were a couple of typos in there and I added maybe three or four comments. Other than that, I did not change the content of the, of the plan at all. And so what I'll do, I didn't want to, you know, send that out to everybody at the last minute. So you felt like you had a reading project before you signed on, on tonight. I, I can show you. Well, I can't show you the changes I made because in the, in the version, I tried to do the track changes and I couldn't get it to show up there. I don't know if that's because, you know, Bill, when he wrote the thing, didn't, didn't start out and track changes or not. But anyhow, so I, I added them and I'll, I'll send that out to everybody when I send it to Jim so that, you know, he can do with it what he needs to, if we vote to adopt it. So anyhow, I will make a motion to adopt our Affordable Housing Plan that was prepared by Bill Warner.
Second.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. Any discussion on the Affordable Housing Plan? Any more you guys want to know about that? And I'm going to step back and close my sliding door back here. The rain just hit our board. Any discussion on the, on the Affordable Housing Plan?
Jed?
Yep.
Um, I was just going to comment that, um, although I wasn't able to, to join the call on Saturday until later on, I also was surprised. I thought there'd be, you know, a good 10 or 12 people there. And I thought maybe there was an initial, um, public speak before I was able to call in as I called in at the end and I heard Joanne and Diane speak then. So I didn't know if some people were on and left the meeting, but apparently not. And I also thought it was, um, an interesting point that, um, Eric Anderson said that we might want to stress that it's, um, also referred to it as workforce housing because for the, the people who weren't, um, on the call um, to hear that part, Eric said, used, for example, he said, among the town employees, only himself and the maintenance team leader, public works, I think, whatever his current title is, under this, under these guidelines will exceed the income limit for this. So the rest of the town employees would fall under this definition, income wise.
Yes, is the, no, I don't know what the teachers do, but certainly store employees, you know, there's an awful lot of people. And I think when you, when you talk about affordable housing, that does have a little bit of a connotation to it of, that is not always positive. And so I think the workforce housing is good and I will change my presentation to have that discussed workforce. We, we had the slide as we were going through it. You know, meet Alice and it talked about the asset limited. I forget what all the things were, but it was really, you know, plugging that into the workforce housing. In an effort to keep the presentation shorter, you know, I cut a bunch of stuff out and, and Alice is one of them that got out. Cause honestly, I wanted to focus more on the seniors. We have more seniors in town than we do Alice workers, but those, those workers who are eligible for the affordable housing that we're looking at are, are great people and we want them living in our town and we want to help facilitate that. So good point, Leanne. Thank you. Any other discussion?
And has there been any other feedback from anyone in the community on the plan?
Um, no, the and I suspect there was, there was one other person that was tuned in and the screen name was Three Bull. And I don't know if that was the River East reporter or what. You know, I'm looking forward to see. I'm sure she's going to write something about our plan, one way or another. She'll either look at it after we get it posted on YouTube or, or whatever, but I would expect there to be a little story on that. Hopefully it's favorable and gets other people to do that. Joanne from the Finance Committee did mention that, you know, she recognized that she was at the meeting where I went to brief the Board of Selectmen on the Town Planner Economic Development Coordinator. And being on the Finance Committee, she said, yeah, we, we looked at that and you know, essentially they removed it from the budget with, I didn't know that until after the town meeting. When I didn't get a copy and I came home to check on how, if that stayed in and it didn't. But she is sold now on the need for somebody on, on the town staff to be working this stuff because, you know, with the declining population, if we don't do something, that is bad news for Andover. You know, if the taxes are high now, you, you lose 20% of our folks. That's not going to help. And, and so she's a believer now and I asked her, I said, if, you know, she could take that message to the Board of Finance folks and I would love to come over and brief them separately. Happy to do that. The other thing that was a little disappointing, there was nobody from the Board of Selectmen on, at the presentation. And, and I had sent out a personal invitation to, you know, the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance prior, hoping, you know, talking about the importance to the town and hoping that they could come and get that. I also asked Diane Grenier to, if maybe we could, we could get me on the docket to attend a senior luncheon and provide the briefing there. So they know, you know, one of the, one of the talking points was you know, it was kind of contentious for a while that we want the state trooper in the budget. It was very clear that seniors thought state trooper was a great idea. And so if we can get the seniors to understand the need for, you know, somebody on the town staff to be working on this project, that would be very helpful to us. Anyhow, that's, I think that covers everything on that. Anything noteworthy that I missed, Jim? There, you're on mute.
I did, I just want to point out, I did contact Sloan Brewster from River East who was on vacation, said she couldn't make it, but she would follow up, get, maybe watch the, the YouTube and follow up with an article.
Okay, very good. So that three bull was not her and I don't know who it was, but I, I tried to get them to provide some feedback or comment or questions and nothing was heard. Maybe, maybe I put them to sleep. I don't know. But, but anyhow, the plan's the plan. Do the first of June. And so the motion on the floor with the second is to adopt the Affordable Housing Plan as presented. And with, if no further discussion, we'll roll call vote Ann Creme.
Hi.
Steve.
I.
Leanne.
Hi.
Ann Blanchard.
Hi.
And I vote I as well. The motion to adopt the Affordable Housing Plan passes five zero zero. Okay. Next item up, changes to the sign regulations. I did get the sign regulations back from Mark Brants. He had some comments on it. None of them were substantive to the, to the thoughts that we were trying to put forward in there. There were, you know, there was we took out the, on the, the window signs, you know, we took out the 50 square foot total. There were a couple of places that I missed taking that out. He pointed that out to me. He, you know, put he consolidated a little bit, that kind of stuff. I will send out to all of you that update. But my suspicion is you're all probably tired of reading about the sign regs at this point. And so what I would like to do tonight is to authorize Jim to send the sign regs out to Krog and whoever else, you know, gets the sign regulations to review before we can go to public hearing. And then we would schedule a public hearing for our July meeting, which I think is July 18. So anyhow, with that, I would like to make a motion to forward the sign regulations for Krog and Town Review and schedule public hearing for our regular meeting on 18 July.
Second.
Thank you, Steve. Any discussion on the sign regs?
Yes, um, this is Leanne. Just as I said last month, um, I think, for example, that I don't think it's particularly burdensome that the Shell Station is almost completely covered in signs. I think it's, you know, a genuine business need and not really intrusive to anybody driving by. Um, but I know you said they can, you know, they can, um, apply to have that waived, but, um, again, I just don't think it's doing any harm. That's all.
Okay. Yep. And, and I don't know that, how aggressively we would go out and do that. I do think as we talk about maintaining the character of the town, maybe less signage is better than more signage. And so the other, the other thing that I will send out to all of you tonight, and again, I didn't want to send something out when we had the special meeting coming up and, and all that. There's a presentation that Mark Brants gave down at Old Sabre and it's called the Good, the Bad and the Ugly. And it talks about the latitude that in our case, the Planning and Zoning Commission might have to require a, you know, commercial applicant to to make his building look like a pleasant character, you know, for what the town is trying to maintain. And so he goes through, you know, and, and I'm not actually, I thought the, you know, the retail store that we're, we're talking about putting in, you'll look very nice. So I wasn't concerned about that, but but he's got, he had some, some pictures. It's about a one hour discussion on his part. And then there's might be 45 minutes of questions and answers after that. I listened to the one hour discussion. I didn't do any questions and answers because one hour was plenty of time to devote to that. But he also has some, a section in there on signs. And, and he talks about, you know, the little signs in Glastonbury in those stores. Actually, he's got, you know, some places is probably overseas, a little, a little McDonald's. It's got a very small sign that you can't even see. But everybody knows McDonald's is there and they do a booming business, all that kind of stuff. So, so I'll send that out to you. I don't want to overload everybody with work, but I, I don't want to not pass on the, the good information that we have available to us. If you're sitting around on a rainy day, nothing to do and you want to look at that, that would be great. So
Jed?
Yep.
I just want to make one comment relative to the window signs.
Yep.
You know, I think one, one is, one, one area of, you know, we've been looking at the window signs in terms of aesthetics and whether they're, it's aesthetically pleasing or not. But I think there's a more important issue and that's public safety. Right? If, if everything's covered up and there's an event at the Shell Station and our state trooper has to go in there. If I'm the state trooper, I want to be able to see inside the building before I enter. Um, and also, you know, if there is, you know, if there's a crimes being committed or something, if you're walking into it, you, you want to be able to see what's going on in the building before you enter. And that would be a concern of me if everything's plastered with signs.
I agree, Steve. I think that, that is a good point. And, and again, you know, so that, that ties handed to hand with you know, we were fairly restrictive in the amount of signs. And then I didn't want to blow it all out of the water by saying you could have hundreds of square feet of window sign when we're limiting it to 32 or 50 square feet to, you know, outside. And so all those things. Yeah, I'm comfortable that the 25% of the square footage putting in signs is, is plenty. And if somebody, you know, doesn't think that's enough, they always have the option of making their case with the zoning board of appeals. And so it's, it's not like there's not a way around that if, if it were to come to pass.
I do agree that that's, um, I do agree that that's a good point. And I guess what my objection, and it's not really an objection, but I'm not that concerned about it. But it was just that I think the signage percent, like you just mentioned, Jed, was cut back quite a bit from what they have now. But I have wondered why they've even wanted to have quite so much covered, like Steve said, because they have been broken into more than once. So maybe there's a happy medium where it is easier to see inside the store and let them still, you know, advertise the main, whatever features, whatever they want that people can buy in the store.
Yep. So then, and I guess you know, the point on, you know, the, the Shell gas station signs. Third, Leanne, you said, you know, they didn't bother you. We gotta have some, you know, at some point a sign is going to go up that does bother you. And we gotta have some kind of uh, ability to restrain it just a little bit, maybe. I know it was Steve Nelson and I, you know, shooting a breeze, we were talking about, there's a banner on, on the baseball card shop as you head down Route six. And we were wondering whether or not, you know, the new regs would, would preclude that. And I went back and thought about it and and actually, no, you know, it's a political sign. Political signs, we can't do too much with as long as it's within the rules and that's in the industrial or business zone, I think. And so they got the bigger rules than we have in, in the residence, residential zone. So that, that banner probably remained in place for, for a while. Anyhow, so it's the, the, the regulations aren't, aren't perfect, but I think they're a big step forward from where we are today. And and certainly with the exception of the political signs, nobody really gives a hoot about a mayhem. But and in the retail store could live with, with our rules and so that was a test case. The, the only commercial business I've seen coming there. Any other discussion before we vote on the way forward with the sign regs? Steve?
Jed, I, going back to your comment on the political signs, I thought in the new regs, we put a time constraint on those.
We did. So, you know, and, and I knew I shouldn't even brought the subject up here tonight. But not everybody thinks that election's over yet. And so we say it's got, you gotta take them down within seven days of the election. Well, there you go. So, so I'm not sure that we'll, we'll have a lot of success on that issue either, but that might be the out there of that particular banner.
Okay. But technically our regs, you know,
They do say, they don't say how far in advance to, that, that you can put them up, you know, you can put them up whenever you want. But within seven days of the election, it would be nice to have them all down. And, and that's what our rigs require. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote on both having zoning the agent for the sign regs review by the required municipalities and to schedule a public hearing to discuss the sign regs at the 18, just prior to the 18 July regular meeting. Ann?
Hi.
Steve?
I.
Leanne?
Hi.
Ann Blanchard?
Hi.
I vote I as well. That motion passes five zero zero. Next up under old business is an update on the gravel pit operation. And while I didn't see any trucks moving stuff, it looked to me like there was less material over there. All of a sudden something went away, but I can't remember when our, our extension and all that expired and when we expected to be remediated. And so I asked Jim to give us an update on the gravel pit. So Jim, it's all yours.
Okay, thank you. I did speak to Chris Bell today, engineer for the, the owners of the pit. He indicated he would be looking, he would be coming before the commission after June meeting with a, an updated restoration plan for approval. Um, I did walk the site also, and every, the steel fence seems to be in place. And Chris agreed to meet with me and Hank, if Hank is available prior to the next meeting and school over the plan. As far as the, the extension there, I'm sorry, the, the period, extension request status, it's actually approved through nine 1722. There were, the original approval was back in June of 2019. There were two, three approvals, two, six months, one 90 day brings it to nine 17. Okay. And previous discussion, the commission actually indicated that the, the restoration could extend past 60 days past the expiration date of the permit. At that time, it was a tighter schedule. And the commission may have just had a lighter, different interpretation of, of, of that matter. I don't know. Nonetheless, September is, is the deadline for permit.
So, but Jim, as a clarification, what you're saying is they can technically go to 60 days beyond nine 17 with the restoration?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And why is that?
Well, they're not actively removing material at that point. They're simply restoring the site.
I know my thought that, you know, when we approved it that way, Leanne was, I thought it was in the town's interest to get as much of the material out of there as possible. But I wanted to have restoration done while it was still warm enough to facilitate you know, the grass germinating and, and getting a little roots in the ground before it was winter time. And so I thought that by that period of time, if they got the grass planted in September, that would be okay. So that was my thinking, right or wrong, but I just wanted that to be not putting down grass seed in December or January.
And I'm sorry, Chris did, did indicate that, you know, they, they had, you know, buyers for this material project going on. So hopefully in the next few weeks, we'll see some activity. And the, what you see stockpiled there, I think is, is earmarked for the, filling the, the drainage basin there.
Jim, could you say that first part again of your explanation? Are you saying that the way we approved it, they have 60 days after they finish removing dirt to do the remediation or is it, is it something else?
No, that's, I agree. That's what was represented in the meeting. Yes. That was
So they have it as nine 1722 is their deadline for So they have it since nine seventeen twenty two is their deadline for removal of anything?
Correct, yes.
And then they have another sixty days during the fair weather to plant.
Yes.
Reseed, and then it expires?
Well, no, it expired, I mean, the the way is, the expiration. The permit expiration is is nine seventeen, no more material will be removed. And restoration should be complete within sixty days of that of that date.
Okay, so it is, it's the re, the ex, the. Nine seventeen is the deadline for the removal of the dirt, and then they have another sixty days to remediate?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that takes care of old business. Now we're moving on to new business. And uh, first item up is receive application for zoning amendment, change in text, and set public hearing. Maybe we've already done that, Jim.
Right, yes.
Okay, very good. Moving on to. Other regulatory amendments, so if you, as you recall. The uh, I had a little chart that talked about uh. A bunch of little changes that we'd run into problem areas like uh, you know, frontage and width and uh. Uh, making sure that we got special permits for any kennels in town and uh. Just some things that were in error, wanted to get fixed up. Oh, and the uh, the cannabis and alcohol regs that were were in there too. Since, uh, you know, as I was working with uh, Mark Brants on. On those particular regs, and and he did give me some comments back that uh, that had a little more work to them than I was hoping. He is, he has now provided a. Complete review of Andover's zoning regs. And uh. I was surprised that all of a sudden that came out. I know, you know, we had that as a goal about uh. Two or three years ago, that we were looking to do that and uh. And of course, in planning and zoning world, nothing happens really fast. But uh, but that is done now, and so I uh. I made it. But I've been sort of busy trying to get ready for the uh, you know, presentation on uh, affordable housing recently and. And getting that done, so I haven't done much. Uh, looking through there, but there were some things that Mark said. Didn't make any sense in the regs. And I agree with them completely, you know, and there's, there's things like when we're talking about. Open space subdivision regulations and calculating the number of lots that you can put in open space subdivision. And and I just didn't have any feel for what. Those words were trying to get at. Mark Brand said the same thing, and so I'm trying to figure out how much energy do I want to put in all those things? Or do we want to get the ninety percent solution and get everything that's done, recognizing that? Some of the words still aren't going to be perfect there, so anyhow. I'm holding the other stuff in abeyance because uh. I've got to get caught up on a a few other things, uh, you know, family wise and around the house and all that, that uh. Have been taking a backseat to everything else and uh. I'll figure out where to go with the rest of the regs. But the next thing on. My plate and our plate. Is got to be to opt out of the uh, accessory dwelling unit. Requirements that the state put on us, they give us the ability to opt out. And that's the issue of if we don't do anything, the state. Regulations automatically go into effect, and they allow everybody in town with a building lot. The as of right opportunity to put an accessory dwelling unit on their lot. So if we have uh, you know, an eight thousand square foot lot on the lake. They would be entitled to put accessory dwelling unit. On the lot, as long as it passed Public Health Code. I don't think that's what we want to do. On those little itty bitty lots on the lake, and so. Uh, our plan that we just uh, adopted. Recommends that we opt out of that, which I intend to do, and that has to be done before the end of the year, and so. Uh, first priority is to uh, is to opt out, and then uh. In conjunction with that, I may work on modifying our accessory dwelling unit. Rigs just a little bit so that uh. They take the good things that the state had, and we put those into effect. The trick is, if you remember when when Bill was talking to us about accessory dwelling units. If we want them to count as affordable housing, it takes a ten year deed restriction. And so what is, what do we do? To make somebody want to put a ten year deed restriction on their. Accessory dwelling unit so that uh. You know, they take the financial hit for doing that, and I don't know the answer to that yet. But those uh, accessory dwelling units, uh, you know, there was an article in the newspaper over the weekend, uh. I think that, you know, that is going to be a big solution. Especially for the seniors, well, the seniors and and the young folks start now both, uh, that's, that's a great opportunity, the uh. But I don't know, so uh, I don't want that to delay us getting this done by the end of the year. I think there's plenty of time for both, but uh. I want to make sure we opt out before the end of the year, so we don't have that uh, come back to haunt us. So anyhow, that's the next thing that I think we'll be working on. And so that's my discussion on other regulatory amendments in that. Unless any of you had any questions on that.
Jed, one question, uh, you just mentioned on the accessory dwelling units and how do we incentivize these folks to. Deed restrict for ten years. Is is giving them some type of tax incentive and option? Is that something we can work with the, I don't know, the Board of Selectmen or something like that?
It uh, it. I think it is, I don't know for sure, it makes sense that that would be a a very good incentive.
Sure.
And so, uh, you know, I'm, I'm trying to keep up with the land use regs, uh, we get into the tax uh. Abatements and and that kind of thing, but. Yes, I think that would be a great way to incentivize putting in that ten year requirement. And uh. You know, Bill Warner's comment was when we were talking about this, it's a ten year restriction's not really. That uh, big an issue because a lot of people will be building this for their parents to live in or something. And, you know, that'll be hopefully close to the ten years that uh. Their family member would get to live in the accessory dwelling unit, and then uh. They're uh, they're going on after that, uh. But I've read where, you know, uh, in our plan, it mentions this too. Accessory dwelling units can provide seniors who choose to put those on their lots. A little extra income so that they can do some of the other stuff as well, but I would hope that uh. You know, the tax abatements, and that's an issue for the Affordable Housing Committee to uh. To wrestle with and figure out how that goes. Okay, um. On that note of the affordable housing, is there anybody on? Planning and zoning commission that would be excited at the opportunity to go work on that affordable housing committee?
I'll do it.
Okay, well, thank you, Leanne, it it sounded like. What's that?
Unless somebody else wants to do it.
I didn't see uh, a lot of hands volunteering and and it. Might be possible that we could have more than one from planning and zoning if that were the case. I appreciate the fact that maybe I won't have to do it. And Joanne, who is at the uh. From the finance committee, it sounded like she was interested in doing it, and I thought she would do a great job uh, with that uh. So. So anyhow, we'll we'll see uh. When the Board of Selectmen. Put the little notice in the newspaper about uh, if if you got any interest, uh. Please let us know in that, uh, in, and that'll come up, but uh, I appreciate your willingness to help out uh, on that, Leanne. And I know you're busy with the, you 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 spend a lot of time going to town meetings, I appreciate that.
I actually like meetings.
Okay, well. I don't mind them, but I just run out of time as I'm trying to get ready for.
Yeah. A lot of people don't like them.
Yep. No, it's nice to hear what's going on. It's high, it's nice to have a say in what's going on too. Um.
Yes.
Okay, anyhow, that's uh. Oh. Okay, so now we're moving down item seven, discussion. And this is where we're going to talk the common driveway, and uh, I think. Abby, if you can allow me to share my screen, I've got a photo or two, I think, here.
You should be able to, let me know if you can't.
Let's see. Okay, just, just to go back a little bit, I had some thoughts on. You know, this, uh, talking to Mark Branch after it was all said and done, and uh. He said, really, what the commission should have done. Was we should have made that a condition of approval when we did the subdivision. In uh, looking back, absolutely correct. You know, uh, that uh. That would have been just so easy. And I told Mark, I said, not a chance in the world, I just stumbled onto that. When we were going through that subdivision process, it looked so easy and uh. You know, so, and I asked him, well, what else did I miss, uh, going through there and that, then, and, you know. It is what it is, couldn't have uh. I I'm surprised that I stumbled onto it, uh, you know, when late in the game when we did. But anyhow, the uh, that would have been the right way to do it. Is we had talked at the uh. At the last meeting. The applicants could have pursued a variance from the zoning board of appeals. That would have been more work on their part for. Something maybe they weren't interested in. I started uh, looking. And. There's a lot of lots around off of Route six. That aren't corner lots. And so if the applicant would have taken the approach that, well, we we don't need an entrance off of Lake Road, he wants to do that. I thought we had uh, much to gain by having that entrance and exit off onto Lake Road. Moving the driveway closer to uh. Further away from the Ben Franklin entrance, I didn't like either because it's already too close to uh, coming around the corner there. And Ben Franklin certainly wasn't going to move their driveway up to the other end of their lot so that uh, that they could do it, um. But there is, you know, a couple of questions that came up in uh. You know, the regulation was. No proposed driveway closer than one hundred feet to any other existing or proposed driveway. Unless the site is of such width that compliance with this requirement would preclude access. And I didn't think it would preclude access. Um, it would have delayed things for the applicant to go to the zoning board of appeals, they chose not to take that route. And then down here, in the interest of public safety, the number of driveways on the public street shall be minimized, and and I really like. The the thought of the common driveway. And in non-residential zones, access to adjacent sites shall be by common driveways wherever feasible. As for why it wasn't feasible, and we didn't get any feedback on that because the public hearing was closed. The commission may require that any driveway be designated and easements to adjacent properties be conveyed. In order to facilitate present or future sharing of such driveways. So I felt the best we could do was to move the uh. The proposed driveway, a couple of feet closer to the Ben Franklin driveway. In hopes that one, uh. If if the Ben Franklin owners ever want to do anything to that property. Then we can force them to move their driveway down to create a shared driveway with the retail store. Or I keep, uh, you know. Holding out hope that uh, they will choose to do the right thing and make a combined driveway anyhow. Not a lot of hope on that, but that's. That would be nice if that were to come that way, because I really do think that's the better answer. And so here, you know, and I know this drawing. You know, is not the easiest to see, but right in here is the driveway for the Ben Franklin. Facility coming in. This little dash line here is the property line between the two sites. And a couple of options that we said at the last meeting, you know, you got this little bump out right here that uh. That the two. Property owners could agree, they were just going to extend this up here, come into this and use that as a shared driveway. I like that the best as far as keeping it further away from Route six. Or Ben Franklin folks could have modified their driveway to come down into this little section and out through here to Lake Road. And and that would have created a shared driveway on the retail outlets. Uh, property. What we did in our condition of approval was we asked that this driveway be moved up. Adjacent to this property line here. And so we've got uh, something that says the driveway can't be any wider than thirty feet, so they'll, they'll make it thirty feet wide here. And then our sidewalk will go, you know, across the road right down there before you get to that. That's what I think will will probably end up happening, I think that is consistent with our regulations. Certainly, if we didn't go with that condition of approval, it would have been very straightforward to deny the application. Uh, my concern is the the applicants would have come back with nothing on Lake Road, which I think. You know, we couldn't, uh, we couldn't demand at that point, so uh. I was somewhat satisfied and still hopeful that uh, that everybody will do the right thing and will get a shared driveway, but. Uh, we are in. We're consistent with what our regulations allow us to do there. But going back, the the best answer would have been to have been smart enough to uh, to make that requirement when we did the subdivision. So any other questions on on that particular issue?
I I think Jed, you brought up a good point, and obviously that was something that. You know, we wouldn't have picked up unless you went through every regulation line by line. I'm wondering for future reference if we should put together kind of a quick checklist. Of items we need to review as part of a commercial application. Now, for example, if the gravel pit, if they sell that and a commercial business wants to go in there, if we have a. A quick checklist that we can go through regarding sidewalks and driveways and. Sinage and, you know, all the things that we need to look at, it might be. Easier for us to make sure we cover everything.
We tried to do that when we came up with the uh, what I refer to as the Heinz fifty seven checklist. It's uh, in our section twenty three for special permit site uh, plan application. And maybe that needs to be expounded on, um. Every time we've had a site plan with a site plan review, the. There's, there's been significant differences in each of them, and the checklist just doesn't really do it. And when I talked to Mark Brands about that, he said, the only way you'll be able to do better. Than you did is if you had a professional town planner. Who's in there that familiar with all these things. And and he would have known because he knows what's going on in the other towns, um. That uh, of what to watch out for, he said, uh. A commission of volunteers is going to be very tough to do that, and we we count on. Jim to go through with that, and in fact, uh, you know, in this particular case, the only reason I stumbled into it at all. Was. Our engineer, Brandon, in his letter, brought up the hundred foot thing. And I said. And I said, you know, where in the heck is that? And so I dug in, you know, I spent some time going through. The the regulations, I finally came up with it and. Not easy to come up with, you know, it's one of those funny sections, and there are those funny sections all through our regs. So maybe a better checklist could do it, but there's just a lot there. And we're just gonna miss something from time to time, and I think that's we'll we'll keep doing the best we can. And that's where we're at.
Hey, thank you. One more question on this particular application that we were waiting on the DOT study. Has that been completed? Do we know the status on that?
I don't know the status. Have you heard anything on that, Jim?
No, we do not. Early in the in the application process, it became apparent that. We had no control over DOT review period. And it was clear that it would not be a condition of approval. It would be. Be part of the. Building permit process.
Sure.
It was required, it would be required, um, I I believe that was actually in a condition of the subdivision approval.
Yeah, I'm just curious whether there's the right-hand turn lane from Route six onto Lake Road. I wouldn't be surprised if the DOT wants to extend that to start before the the new entrance. Into this facility.
I wouldn't be surprised either. Obviously, that that has a cost associated with it that would be borne by the state. Don't know. You know, when when that would be in there, you know, Leanne had mentioned a couple of times the. You know, the starting of the forty mile per hour speed zone, you know, one of the things that I did after this is, you know, I driving downtown Willamette. On Route sixty-six, which is their main street, you know, and there's adjacent driveways all over the place. Well, they've also got a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit down there so that you're not going so fast through there. And the guys go, you know, whipping fifty, sixty miles an hour down Route six. Not exactly what we want, but that's that's the state's ballpark. There's there are a couple of things that they can do there. I I kinda like, you know, if you go into the CBS and Hebron. It it would have, this is a right turn only coming out of here. And and not allowing you to go across here, it would force that traffic out and around. I I would like. To see that in place, too, but that's not, you know, that's not ours to to vote on.
Sure.
We'll we'll see what the state comes up with, but certainly they can't start building until they have an approval from the state on 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 what they submitted.
It'll be very interesting to see what they do.
Yep. It is. Yes.
Do you think? If we were to request the kind of thing that Steve just mentioned and also an extension of the forty mile an hour. Speed limit, where would we start? Do you or Jim know? Would we have to go through the selectmen?
I.
Is it, I'm I'm just guessing, is it? I just assumed that the DOT study of the curb cut that they want on Route six is mainly to do with. The traffic volume, and I'm just guessing that they wouldn't incorporate these other things unless they were asked at the same time. Do we have to ask the selectmen first? Does anybody know?
I don't know.
I I don't know, Leanne. I I mean, it seems that the planning zoning commission could make that. You know, make a request on its own behalf, but but I I can double check. I mean, perhaps such requests do have to go through the board of selectmen. I don't know. Or the chief governing body. I I can find out.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so anyhow, I thought it was worth taking just a couple of minutes. And and I think that's something we don't do enough is, you know, there's always some little oddity on every. Application we have and. If we're gonna learn as much as we can from it, probably worth taking just a couple of minutes after it's done where we can shoot the breeze on it. Not be worried about affecting the outcome so much.
Jed, can I just weigh in on the on the the common drive element there?
Yep.
The applicant, first of all, it it did come up early on the game and. It didn't bring a lot of. There wasn't a particular amount of concern, but in retrospect, I mean, I can see. I I don't know whether this was their strategy or not, the applicant's strategy, but. They wanted the subdivision approved before this the special permit, and I have to admit, I didn't give it a lot of thought. But in retrospect, I mean, bottom line is. If if it was a sightline approval, I'm sorry. A it wasn't a special permit. But a site plan approval. Then. The commission wouldn't have had as much jurisdiction, the commission had much less jurisdiction with the site plan than than a special permit. So that might have been part of their strategy.
I'm sure, I'm sure it was because.
And it went over my head. I mean.
Yep.
I have to admit, it didn't occur to me, and that may have been their their line of thinking all along. I don't know.
I wouldn't be surprised, but.
Pretty clever.
It it was and. I do recall that we were trying to ask some questions about the. Lot coverage and all that kind of stuff, and and the feedback we got at the subdivision, we're just trying to break this into two pieces of property. That's what the subdivision is. We'll show you a site plan after we get the subdivision.
We might have been outdone on that one.
Yep, well, but I do, I do think the common driveway would have been a great condition of approval to put in. When we did the subdivision, that would have been the appropriate time to get it in there.
Exactly, exactly. So then at the special, with the with the. Site plan approval was a non, it would have been a non-issue, so it would have been discretionary versus regulatory. Okay, I just. Thought I'd share that.
Okay. Approval of the minutes from the special meeting of May third, twenty twenty-two. I'll make a motion that the minutes from. The special meeting on May third. Be approved.
Second.
Thank you, Steve. Any comments by anybody? And my only comment is that under member absent, Kevin was also absent from that meeting. In addition to Anne.
I know I wasn't there even, but I'm looking at this and it says Monday, May third. It was Tuesday, May third.
Yep, you're right. I'm just used to always being on a Monday.
Yeah, I realized that I couldn't make it on Tuesday, so then I was looking at this and it says Monday, that's strange.
I'm also used to being on a Monday, clearly.
Yep. It seems like Monday. Any other, any other comments on? The minutes. Okay, so Abby, you got those two changes?
Yes, thank you.
And. We'll we'll vote on the motion to approve those minutes, Anne.
I wasn't there.
Oh, you, okay, so you're abstaining. Yep, got it. Steve.
Hi.
Leanne.
Hi.
Anne Blanchard.
Hi.
And I vote I as well. Motion carries four zero one with Anne Creme abstaining. Next up. Administrative report from zoning agent.
Okay, I've spent a fair amount of time dealing with people looking at various parcels and subdivisions. And somewhat time consuming. Get dealing with some enforcement, did have made some progress, the removal of the. RVs on Route six, and I am working with the gentleman, Mr. Barnett across the street. Forget the street numbers offhand, but around the the corner with a junction with eighty-seven. I will be issuing. Six and eighty-seven.
Don't you mean Route six and Parker Bridge for the Barnett property?
Yes, well, I just think of that as the six eighty-seven corner, but yeah, it is closer to Parker Bridge, you're right.
Okay.
And yeah, yeah. It's just that into town, I'm sorry. Twelve Center Street, I had. Been working with the owner who pulled the permit and is in the middle of demolishing that, but I have seen no action in the past month. So I will be issuing a issuing a formal. Citation under the Blake, the Blake ordinance on that one, hopefully, either later this week or early next week. I have a few other complaints that I hope can deal on in the next week or so. And that's pretty much it.
Jim, how long? Not that I am in a hurry, but you know, the the house that caught fire on. Lake Road where I think it was Jim Anderson used to live. And I forget the number over there, like two twenty something. That certainly looks bladed at this point.
I have no information about that. I can make an inquiry. I'm not sure. Who I would inquire with, but I I can ask around.
Yep, well, and it's so soon after the event. I'm just trying to make myself smarter on when is that a condition that the Blake? Ordinance is pertinent to. So I guess. I know how we're gonna go forward if it doesn't look like it's going to be torn down or or done something with. And maybe because they've got all the doors blocked off, you know, and that. Maybe it doesn't fall into them. I don't know. Think about that a little bit. Don't eat an answer now. I just.
Yeah.
We were talking, I said, oh, this is interesting, yep.
And I do, I do anticipate an application for a special port permit from. The folks up on on the Hebron Road that had. Were looking to put in an in-law apartment. I was told it was in today, but I did not. And I was assuming I would find it in our new permit link system or new software system, and I did not, so. I'm not having you receive it this evening, but presumably it will be next month. And I guess the way things work, if it had been, it actually had been submitted, the clock would start. What the statutes read, if it was submitted prior to the meeting, unfortunately, that that would mean. Anytime prior to the meeting, and with permit length. I'd have to, I have to go in there and see it. So I'm gonna have to change the way I do business a little bit and and monitor that a little more closely apparently. What I'm talking about is is that the commission has thirty days, I believe, to. Well, with special permits, thirty, thirty or thirty-five days to set a public hearing. But the receipt of application commences. Either at the next public, at the next commission meeting, or I believe thirty-five days out. So I just have to, I'm throwing it out there, I gotta be careful about this in in moving forward in the future. But that application, we should see presumably next month.
Okay.
Some of you probably remember it last time around. If it ever, maybe it never, maybe it never made it to playing.
I don't think it did. Yeah, I think it was only a wetlands issue and.
I was, that was my brief tenure as Wetlands agent and that, it was a blur.
And speaking of the inland wetlands water course liaison report, there were no activities that. Are pertinent to planning and zoning going on there. Town's working on some. Road drainage over on Shoddy Mill Road in that vicinity that's going through the wetlands, but that doesn't have anything to do with planning and zoning. Looking around, nobody, nobody from the public has showed up, so there's no public speak.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead, Leanne.
Um, I don't know whether to ask under discussion or not, just a brief question, mostly for Abby. The last meeting of any kind that seems to be posted on the town YouTube channel is from May second. Um, of the any kind of meeting, and I was looking to watch our special meeting about the, you know, the five eighty Route six. And then I also wanted to watch the town meeting, and I know that the affordable housing meeting was just last Saturday. But the meetings usually get posted more quickly than this, and then, you know, you usually see a handful or, you know, eight or ten people. Going in and looking at them. Do you know, just from being in the town office building, if it's just something that. I don't even know who usually does it, that somebody hasn't gotten around to doing?
Yeah, good question. Usually it's Amanda, and I I think it's just. I think it's just a, it's in the queue of things she needs to get to, and it's just. Not quite gotten to yet. I can send her a message that you're looking for some specific meetings if you want me to.
Um, I can do it. That's right. I was just wondering, but you, you know, you. That's probably why. So now I'll go ahead and just ask her if they're gonna be posted soon. Thanks anyway.
Yeah, I don't have access to the YouTube. I I can't help there specifically, but yeah.
Just for the record, Amanda's.
I'll send her a quick email.
Hours have changed, so so the things are not posted in in the same. They're not always gonna be posted as quickly as they they used to be.
Amanda's hours have changed?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. I actually missed something that I should have brought up, and that's the filling of the board clerk. As you know, from the last meeting that Abby is moving on and has a. Full-time job. I did check with Eric today about any. Possibly, any chances of filling those spots? And he indicated, he hasn't, doesn't have anybody in mind, doesn't have anybody lined up. No interviews, nothing of that nature, but is discussing the matter, and I think it has to do with compensation. Before the, it's on the agenda for the board of selectmen this evening. I will follow up on that. I I personally think we did, we did very well with, well, our last, our last few, and I think it's a very important role. But I like the idea that we make a connection with with one of the local universities and. And see if we can get a student in there to, it's a great opportunity for environmental studies or public admin student. And I'd be happy to do some outreach to that effect.
Jim, is that Lynn? I think it was still in the office. You know, other than clerking for the boards.
She's in the, Lynn is still in the office. She does not clerk for the boards.
Right, okay, thanks.
Any other discussion type topics? Hearing none, the next meeting's on June twentieth, seven P M. Still planning on doing by Zoom at this point. And I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Anne. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call for vote, Anne Creme.
Hi.
Steve.
Hi.
Leanne.
Hi.
Anne Blanchard.
Hi.
And I vote I as well. Motion carries five zero zero. I will send out you a couple of. Documents for for all of you to take a look at, the affordable housing, the sign rigs. And the good, the bad, and the ugly, just to keep you amused between now and June, and everybody have a. Everybody have a great evening. Doesn't sound like the rain lasted very long out there. And but. Nonetheless. Enjoy summer, it's right around the corner. Good night, everybody, and thanks for your support.
Good night.
Good everyone.